We'll start with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the South Burlington School Board to order, and we'll start with any comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Not seen any. Well, we'll move to amendments to the agenda. There will be one amendment. We'll add between number four and number five, a discussion of some things that are going on in the legislature about a couple different bills that we may want to weigh in on as a school board. So, but we'll first start with announcements, and if Nirja can lead us with that, that'd be great.
So, the CDC Career Job Expo is Tuesday, April 7, 2015, from noon to 2:00 in the high school gym. So, it's for all students to get like volunteer opportunities and just to meet other businesses. Another thing is the Chamberlain Neighborhood Community Meeting is March 22 at 6:30 PM at Chamberlain School. And some topics include demolition of airport-acquired properties beginning in mid-April, and the Chamberlain Neighborhood Planning Project, and updates on City Center and the Garden Street Project, which is attached. Also, South Burlington City and School Task Force Committee invites you to a meeting on Tuesday, March 31, 2015, at 6:30 PM at the FHTMS cafeteria. And the purpose of this meeting is to discuss options related to the number of schools, grade configurations, and community wants and needs related to city services. And for student report, well, we just recently had talent night this past weekend, so that was really busy time, but also really fun. Unfortunately, the sophomores won, being a senior. That was very disappointing, but it was...
You guys won the people's choice, though, right?
Yeah. But it was awesome. It was a really great time, and that was awesome. Also, coming up is Spring Fling. I believe that's next week, so the student council's planning for that, and we have one hour-long FaceTimes, so we can get activities, and we also have a pep rally, which is gonna be a lot of fun, so that's what's going on.
Thank you.
Do you have an announcement as well?
I have. Just a addition to the task force committee about facilities that, just so you remember, that's a citizen group that's led by Frank Locker. He's a planner, and the school board isn't involved only to observe at this point. They're not, it's not a meeting of the school board, just so you know that. Second, I have an announcement that applies to one of our people here, Nirja, and I want to read this. Nirja Patel is the new distinguished young woman of Vermont, 2015. Nirja competed with other student leaders in the state competition this past weekend at Virgen's Opera House, and will now represent Vermont at the National Program in Mobile, Alabama, at the end of June. This competition provides scholarships to high school seniors, and we're very proud of you. We congratulate you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did you, gonna give us a speech?
How was it?
It was awesome. I got to meet a lot of awesome young ladies, so I made friends with them, and I'm just really excited to go in June.
Yay.
Have you ever been to Alabama?
No, I haven't. So, that'll be fun.
Yeah. Excellent.
Great. Congratulations.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the additional item that we've added regarding legislate, the legislature. And two items. The first one, I think, is fairly quick. It has to do with the education bill, which is House 361, which I believe we've all discussed a little bit before and you've seen. And in particular, one aspect of the bill has a 2% spending cap that would be applied to per pupil spending, possibly alternatively to total budget increase. That's still somewhat in flux as far as what they're doing. With respect to that, I would like to, I've spoke with Elizabeth, and I would like to send a letter to the Education Committee, to the Ways and Means Committee, and maybe appropriations is appropriate as well, putting forth our position regarding that, because we do have some issues with that. And I'd like to work with you. I understand you may have some information as far as the impact that that 2% cap would have. Is that something that you have, that you could pull together and might be able to see over the weekend?
Yes, that'd be fine, yes. We were, David is on vacation, but he's, we've been in communication with it. I know the business managers discussed it at our meeting last Friday, so we can, we can pull some things together, yes.
Yeah. So, I think that probably, probably Julie and I will work on a first draft and then run it through you or David to the rest, and we'll want to get it out probably by Monday. It doesn't, it sounds like we'll have, that'll still be in time to perhaps influence or at least be heard by the committees who are taking this up, so.
Will you be copying the local reps, too, on that?
Yeah, I would think. Yeah, I think we would want to copy the reps. Yeah, to me, from me. No, it'll be from the whole board, so. So, that's, that's the one bill. Are there any other, any questions or comments as far as what's going on with that, the education bill? The other is, last Friday, a bill was voted out of the Ed Committee that would ban strikes and would ban imposition, and would have a dispute resolution mechanism if, if the parties were unable to, to negotiate an agreement on their own. And, and it's, it's a little bit different than the bill that we've been kind of tracking since the beginning of the session. The bill at the beginning of the session would ban strikes and ban imposition, and then have binding arbitration, which is something that the school board has been opposed to and did, in fact, share our viewpoints with the Ed Committee and other legislators, that we were opposed to binding arbitration, primarily because it would put the decision with respect to 80% of our school's budget in the hands of a third party who's not accountable to the voters. That's one of the primary reasons. Second reasons, we explained that we believe that it would, such a setup would just perpetuate the status quo and would not give us an opportunity to look at creative solutions to some of the issues that we face. So, in any event, this new bill does not have binding arbitration, and...
What's the number of the bill, Martin?
The bill is H76.
Yeah, thanks.
And, and instead, the bill would require mediation if, if the parties are unable to settle, I believe it's within 90 days of commencing negotiations. If in 60 days mediation doesn't work, then a fact-finding process would occur. And if within six months, I'm trying to remember if it's within six months of the beginning of negotiations or six months of the conclusion of whatever the most recent contract is, there is a process where there would be hearing in front of the Vermont Labor Relations Board, and there would be evidence presented and such, and the Vermont Labor Relations Board would come out with a recommendation that would not be binding, but would hopefully guide the parties to an agreement. To try to urge the parties to come to some settlement, there are some penalties if there remains no agreement at the end of a year after the previous contract had expired. What would occur if there's still not an agreement at that time is there would be no retroactive pay, wages, or benefits that would be provided to teachers, and there would be an additional one cent levied on property taxes for the school district. So, so that's to try to encourage the parties to get together expeditiously. This is similar, from what I understand. There was testimony presented from folks from around New England. Right now, Vermont is the only state in New England that hasn't banned strikes and imposition. The other states have, and only one state has binding arbitration, that's Connecticut. The rest of the states have some form of what we put forward. So, I explain that because I do want to provide, because the school board, the South Burlington School Board, has had the experience with the strike and has also been providing legislature with its ideas from the trenches, that I'd like to provide our viewpoint of, of this bill. And I did talk to Elizabeth about this as well, and though she and I both agree that it could go further, and, and what we had proposed as a school board is adding some guidelines to fact-finding, that did not go anywhere, but, but this seems to make progress. It seems to be in the right direction. It seems to address a lot of folks' concerns that they have given the effects that we had with the strike this past fall. So, so my inclination is to support, support this bill, to have the, the school board, I think, in advance of the letter that we're talking about with the 2% cap, because I think I need to just deliver this verbally tomorrow, if you, if you two concur, because Elizabeth did concur, that I would say that, you know, the South Burlington School Board is in support of, of this latest bill regarding strikes, imposition, and dispute resolution. So, I turn it over to you two, and just to hear what your viewpoint of that would be.
Well, I agree that it's moving in the right direction. I would like to see the conditions on fact-finding and that sort of thing clarified and made a little easier to begin new thinking and considering new, new options for how to deal with things, so that status quo potential still remains, I guess, in, from what I understand what's there. But I do agree that it's moving in the right direction, and certainly can, certainly can support, let it to that effect.
Okay.
Communication to that effect.
If I may, I got some extra comparison from the story I'm doing tonight, basically kind of saying what the existing law is and what this would change, if you guys want to take a look at it.
Sure.
For the sake of the discussion.
Yeah, I feel, I feel the same. I like the idea of putting some time constraints around it. We've tried to do that in South Burlington with our contract already, trying to put some, some inspiration to move it along, and I like the idea that the, it won't be retroactive. I'm not sure about the 1% penalty tax in terms of impact. I'm not sure I know what that means exactly.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it means one cent on every hundred...
Right.
Hundred dollars of value. Is that, how that, yeah. And, and...
Well, I think it moves, moves the, what's currently $2 to $201, if you will?
Or, I think, well, 98 cents to...
That, that one, yeah, 98 cents.
I don't think, I don't think on the, I don't know what the effect, I don't think there's been talk about...
Yeah, you're right.
How that impacts, if at all, income sensitivity, but the, I, they have to have some sort of penalty on both sides.
Right.
And, and this is what they came up with that, it makes some sense, I mean, because one of the primary factors, I think, that the school board looks at is trying to have a budget that, that keeps the cost to taxpayers down as much as possible, and that probably hits us as hard as it can as far as where it hurts from the school board's side. And I think the same goes for the, the other side as well. I mean, that's, those are pretty draconian results, and the idea is that we should never get there.
Well, so there's been, at least in the press, there's been significant discussion, not only about this, but mostly about binding arbitration with no strike and no imposition. So, I want to be sure that we are clear that we do not support binding arbitration.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's the message. I mean, that's the message that I've been delivering. I mean, from the beginning of the session, it was, I really think we should modify fact-finding guidelines. I still believe that's the way to go, but, but that has no leg, so that's not going anywhere, at least this session. And, and I was opposed to the bill because it did have binding arbitration, but that part, they, they took, in the House General, they took a lot of testimony about different alternatives, but in the end, they did not come out with a bill. So, instead, in the Ed Committee, they came out with a bill, and now it's been kicked back to the House General. And I want to make sure, I think that House General, by the end of that period, had decided that, no, they're not going to do binding arbitration, you know, that, but they didn't know what to put in place instead. And the Ed Committee has gone ahead and looked at the same kind of testimony and said, well, we think this is what we should put in instead. So, I think the message to House General is, don't go back to binding arbitration, and we think that this bill is, is worth moving.
Right.
It's also not clear to me whether that one, that one cent penalty is a one-time, one-year, reset back to, to no penalty a year later, or under what conditions does it go away? Does it ever go away, or does it stay there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question.
See, and I think, I mean, the, the idea is that if this comes out of committee, it goes to the House floor. Whether it's going to pass the House floor or not is, is a question. There's not any kind of shoe-in on this bill. But if it does, it goes to the Senate, and there will be an opportunity for continuing, for us as a board, to continue to impact or influence the legislation that comes out. And, and I think it's, at least at this point, you know, I'm not planning on suggesting any significant changes from what the law is right now. Maybe next week, when it gets out on the floor, maybe that'll be a time to do so, and I'll, you know, ponder it just from, you know, it won't be the board's position, it'll be me trying to figure out what's best. But if not, it's still going to the Senate, and there's still plenty of opportunity to tweak it, so. Any event, so I can deliver that message tomorrow. That sounds like we're all on the same page.
Okay with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Or if you guys, you can, you're also welcome to send emails yourselves to the House General Committee, and I'm sure that would be helpful if you guys get around to it, so. All right, moving on to...
Wait, this, yes. Do you want to go for that?
No, we can, we can jump ahead.
Okay.
Don't you have?
Sure.
So, we're gonna jump ahead to, if it's okay with everybody, we're gonna jump ahead to number 11, the consent agenda. I know that Nissa would love to stay here all evening and hear what we're talking about, but maybe she has things to grade, and we don't want to keep her away from, from that. But, so on the consent agenda...
Here you go. Here you are.
Yeah, let's see, there we are. We have a, a request for a leave of absence from Nissa, and we have three individuals who are, who are retiring, and I've not had the pleasure of having my children have any of the teachers who are retiring, but, you know, we certainly send out our regards and thank them for their service, their years of service, if anybody else has direct experience with these teachers.
Yeah, I would just say that Mr. Belton was my biology teacher and my children's biology teacher, so, long, long service he's had to the district, so we're grateful.
Right.
Yeah, and not only was he my children's biology teacher, he was also the coach of the soccer team in those days, the boy soccer team, which did very well in those days, as I recall, so.
Great. So, I wonder, Nissa, if you could just kind of tell us, we did get your letter, but if, since we have you here in person, if you can kind of make your pitch, and so we can understand.
Well, so I'm requesting a leave of absence. I have been invited to do an artist residency in Daewang Village, which is right outside Hong Kong in Shenzhen. And originally, I was invited to do a three-month residency, and this was actually back this winter. And so, I, you know, I had talked to Patrick Burke about this, because I was gonna miss a little bit of school at the beginning and end, end of this year, beginning of next school year. And then, and then they requested my teaching resume, and they started sending some communications my way in terms of what my interest would be around making some connections with the area schools. Now, Daewang, I don't know if anyone was able to go to the website and check out what the residency program is all about, but the residency program brings in international artists and then either partners them with a mentor in the area, mentor artist. There's open workshops, there's a protocol that we have to follow in terms of how we engage with the community. And education hasn't been an area that they've really looked at until now, when they saw my resume. So, I received an email, actually, over this past break, and they asked if I would be interested in coming for the duration of a year to connect with not only the area Waldorf School, there's a Waldorf School in China, which surprised me, but also the area high school. So, the area high school is looking at some of their digital media programs, and so, looking at my resume, they saw I had some expertise in that area. And so, it'd be a duration of one year. I'm definitely coming back and would definitely like to be back here, but I feel that it's an experience that I, I just feel could really enrich in my personal, what I can bring to the district, what I can bring in terms of having exposure to different teaching styles, even just the connections with teachers over there, and what we might be able to do between our district and what's happening in Daewang Village. I think there's a lot of possibilities, and as an artist, I also get my own studio, I have my housing covered and my meals, so I also get to look at that other part of my life, which I think weighs heavily on my, my teaching in design overall, so.
In a good way.
Yes, in a very good way. So, I didn't include my personal website on there, but I am a local artist as well. That's my other business. So, and I've been very happy that the two have been able to complement each other in quite a way, and I think that this, this opportunity is one that I'm hoping I'll be able to pursue, given, given your A-OK, so.
Though it has nothing to do with this, I'm a huge fan of your artwork.
Oh, thank you. Well, that's, that's also part of the reason I, I mean, I, I've always, a lot of people commented on the similarities between traditional Chinese and Japanese-style painting in my own work, and I, I've been fortunate to visit China twice now, and actually visited the Daewang residency program during our winter break, December, January break, to, to get a sense of what their program is about, to see if it was reputable, look at the spaces, and I just walked away feeling excited, so, yeah.
Excellent. So, do I need a motion on, on this, or do we just, if there's no objection? I'm trying to remember how Elizabeth does this.
Um, I think we need to ask for discussion, and...
All right, we can have discussion, well, we can have a discussion before or after a motion, but we can go ahead and...
Yeah, that's fine. I, apart from Nissa's request, I have a, I have a procedural question about this, and it relates back to last year, I think it was last year, we had a similar situation, and the board asked for some clarification on the procedure that's followed when a request is made, and I don't, if we've gotten that, I missed it somehow, and that's something that I would like to have...
Right.
When we're making choices and decisions like this.
I, I guess I would also, I would suggest, when we get to the agenda for next time, that we make sure we make a note of that, that we want to hear back on that issue, because I recall that as well.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think you need a motion. I think it's a consent agenda thing, so unless somebody wants to take it off as a separate item...
Right.
We just need to pass on a consent...
So, there'd be no objection, consent agenda does pass. All right.
Great, I just, for the record, I just want to make sure, on the retirements, it's Kurt Belton, he's a science teacher at the high school, is retiring, and Ellen LaSalle is a speech and language pathologist at Rick Marcott School, and Michelle Price is an art teacher, we're here at Toddle Middle School, and those are the three teachers we're, who are gonna retire.
Right.
Yeah, and I think you mentioned earlier, Martin, that, that with approval of this, that we'll send out a board, on behalf of the board...
Letter from the board, sure.
Letter of appreciation for service and...
Yep. All right, so we will now backtrack to, you're welcome to stay, Nissa, for the excitement that's to come, but...
Thanks for coming.
All right, back to number five. Thank you.
Well, we're back to...
Just as a note, it's nice to have the person who's making the request appear, appear, and that hasn't always happened in the past, so it's a good thing.
We appreciate it, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that I was able to come in, and I just wanted to see what the process was about, too, so.
Great.
Thank you. So, number five is master planning, financial stewardship, city and school collaboration. City and schools collaboration, I wanted to just let you know that the audit, we've had the same audit firm for three years with two extensions, so it's the fifth year, and so it's time to select a new audit, audit firm. I'm not sure it was here on the board five years ago, but when we changed, it's the responsibility of the city council to pick our auditors, but we're working collaboratively with Tom Hubbard, the treasurer of the city, and Sue Dory, we being, Amity Denton and I. We, we put together an RFP for the city to review, and this'll happen, the RFP will go out for audit services in April. The prior time, and it's something I suggest again, was that there was a committee of four, looked at the responses and interviewed the candidates, the audit candidates, and the committee consisted of the business manager, or the fiscal manager, it could be Amity or me, one school board member, the assistant city manager slash treasurer, which is Tom, and one city council member. So, I'm, you know, it's, it's, I just want to keep, get that out there for you, because the process is starting. We have a lot of RFPs out there, and this is, this is another one.
So, when, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed when the decision has to be made by?
The RFP will go out March 26th. The responses will be back April 22nd, I believe, and, and the committee would meet later that week, so that city council could take action on May 4th. That's, that's generally it.
Okay.
So, we can talk, talk more next time, if, if board members want to do that, or if you want to delegate a, a member, too, that's fine, but, last time Agnes Clift, this was five years ago, so she, she participated.
So, John, just so that I understand, this RFP is triggered by just time going by, or five years?
Our contract was for three years with two, the availability, if they were doing a good job and we were happy, we extended it two years. So, but that's done now.
So, we've gone as far as that process lets us go?
That's right.
So, we need to go, okay? So, it's just a standard business prac, process, it's not a, there's no cause for...
No, no.
Causing this to happen?
No.
Other than, but the process?
That's right. That's right.
What do you anticipate in terms of time, just so we know, as we're trying to find who's gonna do this?
It's not, it's not labor-intensive. I'll tell you about that in a second, but it's, it's three one-hour meetings with the, we probably have three people, three different firms come in, and maybe four, so that's a day. And reviewing the audit, RFP, it takes people varying times, but that's not a long process, because it's standardized what they're gonna produce, so...
And when, when would this be happening?
Mid-April. We need to know the committee makeup, and at the end of April, after April 22nd through May 1, it'll, it'll happen in that, in that time period. So, we'll get back to that.
Yeah, okay.
The other, you mentioned time-intensive. There, in addition to the meeting that's March 31st, there's a meeting of the task force for the master planning tomorrow night from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. This is the 11th meeting the group has had, so...
Wow.
That's, that's the, that's what I was talking about there. Just to talk about my role, I've worked with Annette Harden to take estimates of different combinations of schools or different options of where a school might be and that kind of thing, and taking those estimates and putting them in some kind of process where you could say, well, what would a bond cost? Or laying out our assumptions, so that when someone looks at it later, you can say, wow, this, this extra cost is here, and here's, here's where the assumptions are. So, that's been our role. We're trying to boil a lot of information down to a few numbers, because on the, the community meeting on March 31st will be a review, a formal presentation, and people will be in the groups, it's, it's gonna be called the big deal, considerations, options, and values, and so...
Is that, is that where they're gonna have four options, the four final options? Or is that different now?
Well, now there's, there are six, and believe me, that could change, because it just... Because it just, so that, that's, that will happen there.
Okay.
Has there been general acceptance of the numbers that Annette and you were able to develop?
I, I think so, there, there, one, one of the key considerations, looking at the school's position is our debt, our annual debt and our debt load compared to many organizations is very low. The current year, we have a debt payment of about $650,000. In two years, that'll be $150,000, which is less than 1% of our budget. And, you know, 5% of our budget is, is a good number to have to continue to keep building your capital, and that's a, that'll be a, a large number, and, and some of the options are a lot higher, so trying to get that on the table, trying to, attempting to get it down to what it would cost a taxpayer under our current system with an average home. And once again, I think, and Dan has worked with us some before on projections and the projections, the key there is making sure your assumptions are known to people and the risks, because factors change every day, so that's, that's where.
I did have the opportunity, spent a little bit of time at the last meeting with Annette to, in the break, to understand basically what was behind it, and it seemed to me that the assumptions you're using are reasonable. Some of the results are a little scary, but, but the assumptions are reasonable.
That's right.
Okay, so, so that's why I was curious about whether the task group had accepted those as being reasonable numbers to consider in their deliberations. I mean, they're going to have to get refined with time, no matter what.
Right, that's exactly right.
So, so they aren't final by any means, but, but I think they're representative.
There is one more, we have a 10-minute update on the agenda tomorrow, to talk about that again with the group, so.
And I do think one of the things that did, that did stick in my mind the last time is that I think we need to understand what a reasonable debt load is from a financing standpoint, you know, affecting both the city and the school's ability to get money.
Right.
It's a little early to worry about that, but I think, I think it has to be worried about.
Yeah.
Also, David and I met with, had the city meeting with Pat Nowak and Kevin last week too, and talked a little bit about airport, what's going to happen as they start to take down houses over there, and a little bit about master planning, which that's coming soon, I think, right, just a few weeks?
What the airport...
The demolition of those houses.
Okay.
Yeah.
April is supposed to start, my understanding?
Yeah.
And what is going to happen?
I, there's a lot of not sure, but, but it sounds like they're trying to get it together and figure out so that David knows exactly what's going to happen around the school and...
Right.
Yeah.
Is that all for that?
Yeah.
We'll move on to number six.
Under administrative reports, the elevator bathrooms and windows, these are projects that have been started to be funded by bonds, and we, we meaning Bart Nacelli and two of the architects from Dor Whittier, Doran Whittier, met with Julie and Pat Laduke yesterday and went through the project, it was about an hour and 20, an hour and 10 minutes, to go through the project in depth, so that at the April 1st meeting, the, the architects will come back and give the whole board a 20-minute summary of the project. What we did is we took notes about questions, we tried to lay it out simply about why we're doing the job, and it's most, it's because of accessibility and the reliability of the elevator, so it's, it's a couple of reasons, and we want to keep that as the focus, there's a lot that goes with it, but, so the, the next things that happened are, April 6th, it'll be kind of new for us, the, at noon, there are two, two construction manager, two companies that are competing for this job, they will drop off their proposals to the business office, we'll stamp them in and leave them, and at, at the board meeting that night on April 6th, the board will open them officially, and then between then, April 6th and April 15th board meeting, my office, Doran Whittier, the board will look at these and decide if either we'll go forward or which one will be, which one will be chosen. So that's briefly on the elevator, a lot more is coming, so I'll leave that brief. The high school window project is, we've, we've disclosed this on our website since August, that when we started doing testing last year, there were PCBs found there, and so getting a plan that works, that contractors will bid on, has been a challenge, and we, we sent out RFP, we sent out RFPs and hope to have a bid now, so we knew who the contractor would be. But the issue is, general contractors and those that remediate hazards don't work well together as far as the legality, their contracts, and they do two separate functions. Our idea was to have one general contractor be responsible for the whole, whole process, because windows are taken out and then the, the area has to be boarded up, and then the new windows come in and it has to be seamless, no storm damage, no animals in the building, that kind of thing. But we've worked out a way with, Weeman Lafferty is the architect on this job, to have the, the company that does the remediation, take away the old windows, strip it out, and seal up the job, and then a week later, another contractor would do the job, and it's, it's going to be more attractive to each, to each of the contractors to bid, we, we assume. Also, our, our architect and the, the advisor from the, from the hazardous materials side are both getting the word out that this is a job, that's the first part, and that we're going to have to do more, and this is, this will be like a prototype to get some of the work done, so.
So it's going to be parsed as two sequential stages, phases?
Yes, yes, and we have a plan that the architect came in to seal up, a temporary seal of those windows, so that the contractors aren't tripping on each other, but they can, in a timely basis, get it done. It's a three-week project, so the, the difference between this and the elevator project, which takes a lot of effort, a lot of time, duration, this is a smaller.
So when are the windows being done?
Well, the, the bids are be, the RFPs are being finalized now.
Mm-hmm.
The RFP, and they, let's see, we're in March, by the 25th or so, we're supposed to have the RFPs ready to roll, so there'll be two RFPs that go out at the same time.
Okay, and are you anticipating they do it in the summer though?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
They can, if we get our, get contractors picked, it's still a six-week average time to order windows.
Okay.
So they will be available to be done June 20th, around there, but it's all dependent on getting this part done.
Right.
Yep. The third thing is the upgrade of restrooms, and that project has been folded in with our ADA project, the elevator, so that it gets completed in time. We're working on the, the bathroom that's adjoining the girls' room, the girls' restroom that's right outside the business office, and once again, this project has...
Aren't you, aren't you doing the fam, the, the general?
That's, that's what we're doing, that bathroom there.
Not the girls' bathroom, but the gender neutral bathroom?
That's right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we're going to make sure that that's done in time for school, so, and that's briefly, we'll keep updating you on that.
Excellent. All right, let's move on to executive limitations, policy monitoring. I recall, right, we questioned whether the reporting of compliance was appropriate, and you've come back and have a compliance plan now and a report of policy non-compliance. I mean, I, I guess, I, I've looked at it and, and the issue I had with saying that we were compliant, because I do believe this was something that I raised, was that we, in fact, were without written curricula aligned with Vermont standards and board ends policies that are coordinated across all grade levels in schools. That, that was kind of the reason why I thought we were not in compliance, because we don't have those written curricula that are so aligned. I recognize, though, that everything you had gone over, Stuart had gone over and we, and administration had gone over, showed that in fact, we were working towards that. So I, I didn't think ultimately that we were, you know, in a bad place, but having said that, you know, I look at this and I'm not sure if, that, that the compliance plan that you lay out here is, is necessarily getting at what at least my question was, which, which is that you don't have the written curricula that align to the ends policies or Vermont standards, and I understand you're working towards them. This is the continuous improvement plan, unless, unless you're saying that's where subsumed in that is we are going to have as part of the continuous improvement, improvement plan, we're going to have those written criteria, I mean, written curricula that align to the ends and...
They'll never...
Maybe we have a, a different interpretation here, Martin, because the ends need to be embedded within curriculum that are required by the state of Vermont and are aligned to state and Vermont standards.
Right.
So we're not going to have a student has a sense of belonging and fun along the way curriculum, we're going to say that this particular curriculum addresses that end.
Right.
And so the compliance plan talks about two things, one, we have to have a continuous improvement plan, which are mostly focused on math and literacy under the no child left behind laws, and we're aligning those to make sure that those steps we take will cite the ends that also get addressed at that, at that time. That's not required by the state, but required by trying to align the plans that we have, and that the second part is as we build our proficiency-based graduation requirements, as I showed you, you know, we've said that for each proficiency, there are the ends, and if there are any missing ends, then we'll create the proficiencies, you know, you know, after we do what we've done so far, and we say, well, wait, these three ends are still missing, where are they going to be? And then the indicators is such, so that's the first step. As we move backwards from there, what are the indicators for graduation, indicators for end of, uh, middle school, indicate, indicators for end of fifth grade, of those proficiencies which have the ends embedded in them, that it's an organic process, as opposed to a separate document, that is in a sense, an ends curriculum. That's a very different beast, so I, 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 I mean, I could be having it wrong, because it's the board's call on this, but I really feel that by citing within our curriculum where the ends are and where we're, we're, we're going to be assessing for proficiency, when you see the proficiencies that you need to start...
Wait, say, say that first part, that you just said. Curriculum, you said you're going to have the curriculum that cite to the ends.
So we'll have the proficiencies for every content area.
Right.
And the transferable skills is through the EQS. So in October, what you'll get in front of you will say, if you graduate from South Burlington High School in science, here are eight things that every student needs to show their proficient, and each one will have ends attached to them. In other words, if you're proficient in hypothesis, we're saying, here are the ends that go with hypotheses. And then, since the board has to pass those pieces, if you're, if you either say, well, no, we don't see where the ends is attached, or we don't think it's sufficient, I mean, that's what we would address.
We do that within the PBGRs, is what you're saying?
Within the PBGRs, so when students graduate, we're saying they're graduating not only with the proficiencies in the content area, but we also know that they're graduating with the ends that go with that particular graduation proficiency.
So because we have to have the PBGRs by October, you're saying we would be in compliance by October?
Uh, no, we may still, I mean, I don't know what 2.10 will look by next year, but that's as far as compliance as we can go until we actually have a board-approved...
Right.
Proficiency-based graduation, because that will then drive changes in our written curriculum, but we can't really change the curriculum until we have board-approved proficiencies, because, for example...
Well, we have to have that by May, right?
We have to have that by January.
Oh, I thought we had to have that by May.
We could see it this fall.
By May would be the continuous improvement plans.
Oh, I see.
Those you'll have.
Okay.
But that's only one step.
Mm-hmm.
The real piece here is, in terms of the embedment into the curriculum, is when the whole discussion is done, hopefully in November, first reading in October, sometime in November, that we all have agreed that these are the proficiencies for students to graduate from the South Burlington High School, that our ends will be totally embedded in those, and therefore, when you graduate, we'll be able to say, and we'll have the assessments that go with it, you know, you have attained these proficiencies, you can graduate, and when you attain those proficiencies, these are the ends you attain with each one of those. And so the compliance plan really is up till that point, because I can't really change the rest of the written curriculum until we have those proficiencies.
So to me, that seems to suggest that there's another step in the, in the...
I, I could add to the compliance plan about what happens next.
Either that there's another step there, or that the, up in the front, the, without written curricula should be modified to be...
Well, that will take three readings, it's easier for him to...
Right, no, I understand.
That's the part that was missing to me, I mean, I see this, but it doesn't tie back.
So I think it needs, I think it needs at least one more statement that says that that'll be the basis on which you'll close to the curricula.
I'm happy to click that.
Right, all right. Yeah, with that, I think maybe we're clear on the understanding now, and, and, I, because, because I just look at curriculum on your page three of the document, curriculum content including transferable skills, and it talks about each supervisory union board, you know, I know this is from the EQS, but I assume that's what we're striving for as well, shall ensure the written and delivered curriculum within their supervisory union is aligned with the standards approved by the state board, and we have added the ends, it's just that you don't walk us all the way to that point.
I'm happy to add the next step.
Okay.
I, I now understand your concern.
Can I just ask one other question?
Certainly.
Sorry, on the bottom of page, I don't know, there's no pages, but on, under flexible pathways.
Mm-hmm.
The second paragraph, it says, "for all students in grade seven and nine, as well as students in grade 11 and 12 involved in dual enrollment."
Mm-hmm.
I don't understand that.
So, so this is, that's, that's Act 77?
Right, I know about what that is, but how does that, I don't understand how that relates, because isn't that their choice, kids' choices to take a dual enrollment class?
Right, and if they do choose a dual enrollment plan, then we have to have a...
A flexible, a learning pathway?
We have to have, yes, a, a PLP for them.
So...
In, in other words, the state requires us to have a PLP next year in place for all seventh graders.
Okay.
And all ninth graders, and then over time, it grows, but if a student wants to do a flexible pathway...
Yeah.
Of a dual enrollment course, then for that student who's an 11th and 12th grader, we also have to create for that individual student, not as for all 11th graders, a, they have to have a personal learning plan to do that, because they have to show why they want to do dual enrollment, that's the law.
But the law, okay, I don't, I don't understand that, because the law is that, that every kid is allowed to take two dual enrollment classes.
And they will be.
But you're just saying there has to be a specific...
But we have to have a plan in place for that student, that student has to have their own plan.
So in order for that kid to get a voucher to take a class at UVM, they need to, with their guidance person or something?
Yeah.
Work out a PLP in advance of that.
Right.
Which to me, I have to say, is a deterrent to the dual enrollment process, because kids often decide, tell me if I'm wrong here, Neerja, at the last minute, that they're going to take a dual enrollment class, and that, that, to try to get together with their guidance counselor and develop a plan?
So, so Julie?
Yes?
I don't disagree with you, but that's what the legislature passed. So I don't have any control over that.
So is this...
It's any more than the fact that PLPs are going to be in place by... It's any more than the fact that PLPs are going to be in place by 2019 for everybody, but 2020 is the first proficiency-based graduation class. And it would have been nice to have the two things aligned, so it was a natural, organic process up the line. That didn't happen either, so...
So, tell me, so when this, this is by next November? So, anybody that takes a class as of, as of second semester next year has to have a PLP?
That's correct. And Tim Wild's all over that.
And can I just ask another question, then? Are we letting people know that? Because I think that that's different, that's a change from what students have to do now.
I will double-check with Tim, but like I said, every time I say seventh and ninth grade, and he says, and every student who's taking a dual enrollment class. So, I know he's on it.
Okay.
Because he's the one who points that into my face.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so we are on to setting the agenda for April 1st. Are we setting the agenda for April 6th as well, or is that happening?
I think we were going to talk... I think we're supposed to talk about it.
Okay, all right, so, start with April 1st.
So, is this, John, where the, this is where the Dorn Whittier is coming, right?
Yeah, I suggest put in plate in point seven.
Okay.
Call it the Elevator ADA Project Presentation. And we said 20 minutes, so that fits right in there.
Yeah, one thing, just for Dan and Martin, is that Pat and I, we talked about this yesterday. They have a really good PowerPoint presentation that they, we suggested that they send to the board ahead of time with the questions that we asked and the answers, so that we could perhaps... Yeah, otherwise, there's, there are a lot of questions you could ask about this part, yeah.
And we projected, project, we figured that's going to be out Monday or Tuesday next week, so you have it, plenty of time.
Okay.
Under master plan, you know, David and Elizabeth may have other things here, but master planning, if we could talk about that audit again, at point six specifically? Audit review membership or...
I assume we don't have to change that on the agenda, though. I mean, it will be just taken up.
It'll take that place, yes.
Go ahead.
We've talked about 10 and 11. These all seem doable, except we're wondering if 2.1 could be moved off until the second regular meeting in April the 15th. And compensation and benefits will be, Karen will, that's the first time she's doing that, so that'll be 2.8, and asset protection will be doing that also.
On the 1st.
On the 1st, as it is.
But 2.1 will be moved.
I think, yes.
And we also have to add 2.10 to, you know, continued, which at this point should not take long.
And so, how are we doing these 2.8 and 2.7?
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Because we didn't, I mean, I think we talked about doing the longer reports as...
Well, not necessarily the longer one, we were just going to pick a couple to do in depth. It didn't necessarily have to be a longer one. And I would suggest we don't pick these two, because just the three of us are here, and maybe Patrick and Elizabeth really don't want those to be the long ones.
Right. Well, I don't think these are long ones, are they, John?
2.8 is not, not long, 2.7 can be involved.
Yeah.
Because there, things change there.
So, did we decide on a committee to do either of those?
I just think, that's what I'm saying. I think that we, especially for 2.7, if that's what he's saying, John's saying, that maybe we need to have a committee do that. It's not that we can't all review it at the meeting, it's that
Right, right.
we get some kind of understanding of, I don't know.
So, who wants to volunteer to do it with Patrick? We'll volunteer him. I'm not going to.
I'd be very willing to do it, but I won't be here for the next two weeks, so I can't.
So, that doesn't...
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do it, if, and, I don't know. I promised Elizabeth not to sign her up for anything.
Well, let's see if, let's see if Patrick can do it. And if not, I'll fit in.
Or I can, yeah, okay.
If Patrick can't do it, I'll do it with you.
Yeah.
So, March 30th, we could do it, that's the Monday before this? And I know that's, I'm assuming that that's a day that...
Yeah, that would work for me, if necessary, if Patrick can't do it.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, is Patrick and Julie, unless Patrick can't do it?
Will you remind me, Delina, that we're doing that? Okay, I mean, I have it down, but I might forget any.
I'll make the point of sending Patrick an email, since apparently you're not going to do it on my behalf.
He's also never seen asset protection.
Well, that's, well, no, but that's why I thought that maybe he should do it. Email Patrick, all right, I, sorry. So, how are we going to put on here to hear about an update on the procedures? Can we have that part of the superintendent's report, procedures for granting leave? That we talked about earlier, that Julie raised?
Yeah, that would be good. Part of it is my fault that I didn't make a note. That's it for that one?
That's it for that. Yeah, to do what I look at for April 6th.
Yes.
Yeah, we're supposed to discuss it, as far as if this is what we want to see on here.
How long, how long are we planning this meeting? How long did we say this was going to be?
Six to 11.
No.
I think you probably need to have a discussion moving forward.
Yeah, especially if we're, yeah, yeah.
Well, let me, maybe we can, well, first of all, I seem to be on here for a science kneecap thing. That can be handled very simply. I can just hand those out to you, I only have a couple remarks, so it's a less than a five-minute thing.
Okay.
Especially since kneecaps are not going to happen a lot anymore.
Well, there's still another year of science kneecaps, I believe.
Yeah. And, but, I have also put some time into developing a history of what, or where our budget has been and a lot of the parameters that are associated with that, that I think could end up being a 20-minute discussion, which I think would be helpful for you all to see in some form or other. I mean, I could just hand it out, but it has a lot of questions. I think it would be good to have that before we, before we begin to deliberate on this task force recommendations.
Budget discussion, is that what?
It's really provide a historical perspective as to what's happened. So, I've looked at the last eight years' worth of budgets and...
Budget history, we can call it.
Budget history, right. And, you know, the question, the discussion would be around, are there any, anything in the trends that we see there that we find troublesome, or that we should worry about? It's just, it's just, it's just a report of the numbers. I mean, it's so, you know, editorializing is all in the minds of us. So, I would suggest adding that to the agenda.
Yeah, I think so.
The, the opening bids in public, there's a possibility that the contractors would come to that?
So, this is, so we're going to do that during our work session?
Could be at the very first, it's a, it's a matter of moments.
So, would we do that after executive session and as the meeting is starting, right?
So, there has to be an executive session on April 6th as well?
Right.
Not just April 1st?
Well, it's up to you.
Well, I just don't know what.
Are you going to review the legal services RFP at that meeting too, John?
Well, the proposals are supposed to come in the 27th of March. So, they will be available on April 1.
So, did we do that in executive session before?
Right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's appropriate.
Will there have been enough time for somebody to do a little analysis of them? I'm assuming you get more than one.
Or can we just get them, like, can we get them to read ourselves?
Yes, we've asked, yes, we can, I don't remember how many copies we asked for, but you're sure.
Or, we could just share one, I mean, if we want to, I mean, I don't know. Thanks, Neerja.
You could have them, thank you. You could have them early, I mean, as soon as we go, yeah.
So, so we probably should have executive session at...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we have a lot on this work session. It's, I think it's all good, but I think we need to be a little realistic about it. We're opening those bids, we're doing...
But not only, we're just, we're opening the envelopes, we're not reviewing them.
We're not deciding, right?
The only thing we do is we, if there's a number, the, this fee for services, if that number will look and say, this is X contractor bid this, Y contractor bid that, and the apparent low bidder is this. However, we go through our review, the criteria we have established. And that's, that's how it works, it's real brief.
What about the duration of, I mean, I think master planning could be, potentially be, could that be a long discussion?
Well, you will have had your community meeting.
Right, I think, that's why I think that could be a long discussion.
However, though, I don't believe that the results will really be ready here.
Okay.
It's not, it's not the recommendations that are coming on the 31st.
No.
Right.
I think we narrowed it down to this consideration, we'd like input from the public, as I understand it.
That's right.
And they will digest that over, I think their target is closer to the end of April, early May, to get, to get a recommendation to us.
So, what about the administrative reports? Do you have a sense of how long those will be, John?
Well, sure, trends and substitute use is, is, the draft is ready, David hasn't seen it yet, so that's... There's a lot there, you know, it's...
Yeah, is that all stuff that we will be able to read ahead of time, or no?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure about this accounts payable approval process. We established that three years ago.
I know, I know why that's on, that's on there, because I asked for it to be on there, because we, Elizabeth and I were talking about the fact that it is a little bit hard to question the payables when they've already been paid. And I know we've had the discussion before, but we talked about at least having a new discussion about that, the timing issue related to that. It seems like there's not much we can do if we question the payable after it's already been paid and we disagree with the payment. I don't know.
Okay, I don't want to engage in that right now.
No, I know, that's what, that was the impetus for it.
So, you probably have to change one of your policies, I think, because you have something about $50,000, anything over $50,000, you have to change a policy.
So, maybe it's better, it's better in a report on when we do the policy, is that, is that right, Martin?
I think it's a separate policy, I don't think it's one of our monitoring report policies. Is that right?
Right, it was a resolution, actually, that was passed in response to a question.
Meeting I was not here, and I still have never really understood what we're doing on that, but I just go along.
And the $50,000 ones are never paid until after there's a board approval.
Certain $50,000, or health bills.
I mean, some are pre, pre-approved for the bigger amount, that's a parsed out, right?
Well, we should definitely revisit, we should just revisit what we did and...
Sure.
No, I think, it might be a quick thing, but, yeah, okay.
So, related to that, are there any, are there any open issues on, on audit recommendations that we should be visiting? The one that comes to mind is the one on the, the special fundraising, or whatever that was called, and...
Well, that's on here.
We have a fundraising update here.
That's on our agenda.
Is that what that is, okay.
The audit report is out, I just got it. We, the management letter I don't have, but I'll have in a matter of days. And we have to file with the federal government by March 31st, so...
Is it a clean, do you think, do you expect a clean management letter?
Well, clean, those are recommendations of management, so we have a clean audit, for sure.
Right, yeah, 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 okay.
And I, quite frankly, I'm not sure the final, what the letter is going to say.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, I guess on this April 6th, we're just adding the budget history, otherwise it's staying the same?
There are a few things that were suggested, collective bargaining, enrollment, suggested...
Oh, these are additional suggestions, okay.
Tuition students, I mean, enrollment.
So, is collective bargaining going to be part of the executive session? So, we're going to add executive session to do the RFPs for legal services and collective bargaining, I assume?
Seemed like.
Okay. So, we will have to add an exec session. Do you have all these notes, or am I going to give these to somebody?
Delina.
Oh, Delina has it, all right.
Yes.
So, executive session will have collective bargaining and reviewing the responses to request approvals. What was the other one that, additional?
Tuition students.
Okay.
Or, yeah, enrollment, kind of.
Is that just a, is that a report or a discussion, administrative report or discussion of that? Is it a separate item, in other words?
I think, it seems to me, a lot of these, we should maybe clarify the next meeting about what are these are reports and what are discussions, because there's a meeting April 1st and a meeting April 6th. If these are all going to be administrative reports, they won't all happen.
I don't think, I don't think these, I mean, my perspective is these are not all administrative reports. Some of these are quick, what I would think are quick discussions.
Yeah.
Just things we haven't touched on that we need to recently. But, and I include the accounts payable in that, and I don't know about fundraising, but...
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any of them that's actually, as far as reports, it's reporting out the status. I don't know that, I mean, with trends and substitute use, maybe there are some trends that could be shown on that, some actual data for that one. But parent, teacher communication, I don't know.
I don't know why that's on there, actually.
Well, I, I think because there's been some issues, and we want to revisit it. I think that you wanted it down there.
I did?
It's back from your big schedule.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then fundraising update, then the tuition students enrollment. Yeah, I think tuition students is pretty important to talk about, because there's, there seems, I don't know if there's movement in the islands, but there's movements other places where there are choice schools talking about designating one school. And we should probably make sure we're on top of that.
Certainly Alamois is on that course.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have at least one student from there.
Right, right, so... That all makes sense, Delina?
So, are we going to start at 6:00 and just have executive session at 6:00? Yes, okay.
Most of them want to start earlier than that.
So, the only thing about that is there has to be a time certain for open bidding.
Can we start at 5:30 and have open bidding there? I mean, I don't know if Patrick can make it, or at 5:30.
I'm okay with 5:30.
I'd be okay at 5:30, and then 6 o'clock would be bid opening.
I think it's the administrators and you and Elizabeth that have a bigger problem with the time than I do.
Mondays are easy for me.
Yeah.
So, 5:30 to 6:00 is executive session, and then 6 o'clock is regular meeting.
I'm just wondering if that's a long enough executive session to discuss those RFP things?
If we've looked at it in advance, probably is.
Okay, that's fine.
I would think.
We just need to tell everybody that we're going to start earlier, yeah.
All right, so do we have to look at future agenda items, or is that kind of what we just did?
No.
I think that's what we kind of just did.
I agree.
Consider the minutes of the meeting of March 4th. I didn't get the minutes in my packet, did you?
Yeah, I didn't either.
I didn't get them either.
Is it possible for us to be able to consider these minutes at the next meeting? Or do you have to have them signed off on today?
No.
All right, so we'll have to consider both minutes next week. Do you want to get the consent agenda, any questions on accounts payable order number 32, number 33?
No.
Nope. All right, and then we actually have an action item.
This is our most oft, oft-seen action to the Howard Center. It's contractual payments over $50,000 for, for specific services that are rendered. That's why it shows up here. So, we pay quarterly for school-based commissions, permissions... So, we pay quarterly for, um, school-based commissions who are involved in social work, and that's why it's here, there, there are obviously other services that we're paying for, because the total bill's $92,000 this time, but that's done. And, you know, that's one of the things, I, I understand what you're, you're saying, we'll get those conditions and pull the resolution back out.
Okay.
And that's easy to get out beforehand.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm.
That might just be helpful.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Sure.
Oh, here it is. So, do I have a motion to approve?
So, moved.
Second.
Here's a good question for you on Robert's rules, if there's only three of us here, is it just take two people voting, or do I have to vote?
You only have to vote if it's a tie.
Oh, okay.
I think you have a quorum, and then it's the majority of the.
Of the quorum, thank you, it's been a while since I've looked at that.
We have a quorum, and.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I assume that you'd say aye, since you have a motion and a second there. All right, so, so that's approved, moving on. Hey, how about a motion for adjournment?
So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.